I'm sorry, I just got to ask one more thing. Can I, please? We have people in the audience here tonight that are here to overview, obviously, council discussions and the requests I had put in for a sidewalk on Isla. And I hate like hell having them sit there, and to be quite honest with you, I got to get out of here myself because I want to get home to my wife, to be very honest with you. And I don't want those people to have to sit here until 9:00 or 9:30 tonight because the agenda is relatively long.
Motion, sir, to move it up? Motion to move it up? Supported by Counselor Scott. Any questions? All in favor? Motion carried. So we are going to go to...
I've got two minutes.
13. New business. Council votes.
I got to go quick because Counselor Bondi just gave me two minutes. So, anyways, it's actually not going to take much more than two minutes, to be quite honest with you. I had put this on the... And first of all, Cheryl, I want to thank you for getting this back onto the agenda for me. I really appreciate that. But with that being said, I did have discussions with, obviously, the taxpayers in front of us tonight, and not only them, several people in that surrounding community over concerns with the long-term care facility, Isler Lodge. And I did take the onus upon myself to talk to the director of Isler Lodge, who totally understood my position, was very receptive to doing whatever they could do to assist in, obviously, you know, bringing the problem to a resolve. And if you go to Isler Avenue by Isler Lodge, going towards Hanlon Street, there's no sidewalk there. There's a sidewalk that goes from on Isler Lodge to Main Street, but nothing from Isler Lodge to Hanlon Street. And during the nice weather, the residents there always take opportunity, and the administration in helping the residents, always take opportunity to help the residents down to Optimist Park. Let them get outside, and then they're in an isolated area away from traffic, and they can spend some quality time outside with them, and it's a perfect place to be for them. But with that being said, is there's no place to migrate there. You either go on the road and cars going around you, or residents backing out of their driveway. And not that it's a problem with them, for the record, they're, as residents, are extremely concerned. It's not... This is certainly by no means, just for the record, a self-righteousion of on their part. It's raised as a concern for the people in their community, obviously including the residents of the long-term care facility. So I'm actually glad they brought it forward as an issue, because I didn't know the issue was actually there. So with that being said, I'm just asking council, and I'm asking the forward council in 2015, to introduce this into the budget, to make it happen, to get that sidewalk put in into the 2015 budget deliberations. And if we get it put into the 2015 budget deliberations, we can have it in place by the spring of the year, I would suggest. And in term of also of all that, if I could get a cost, if you will, from our infrastructure director, Chris Nepsey, on what we would be looking at, because I don't assume in terms of multimillion-dollar budget, it would be a large undertaking to do that. So if I could get that cost, Chris, if you don't mind, all council, get that cost and look into that, and we can look at what that will represent in terms of the 2015 budget for this council. And again, in the event that I'm not successful, I will follow up with the current council of the day to make sure that that gets put in. So if I could get a cost on that, Chris, and get council support on that, I really would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to... Anything? Counselor Bowman?
I think you're right. It should be put into next year's budget. And in travels around town, I've found another area similar. It's on the Arner Town Line as it comes in towards Talbot Street. The Lester subdivision, there are elderly people, most of them into that, those townhouses, and they have issues coming up that roadway which moves at a fairly good clip getting to the corner. So if that could be added to 2015 budget, or deliberations anyway, that would be appropriate as well.
Thank you, sir. That heard.
Did you make that a motion, and I'll second it with those two?
Yes. In saying that, I will make that a motion in relationship to the piece of real estate that Counselor Bowman was referring to, and obviously Isler Avenue.
Supported by Counselor Bowman. Any questions to the motion? All in favor of that motion? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, counsel.
Corporation Services Department, report 2014-25. Bylaw number 1356. Extension agreement with a recommendation. Supported by Counselor Bondi, supported by Deputy Mayor Malash. Any questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. Fire Department, report number 14-04. Purchase self-contained breathing apparatus with a recommendation. Counselor Scott? Supported by Counselor Bowman. Any questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. C. Community Services, report number 2014-022. Colchester Harbor Dock replacement with the recommendation. It's three of them. Supported by Counselor Scott. Any questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. Corporate Services Department, report number 2014-26. Bylaw number 1228, a bylaw to prohibit smoking. Recommendation. Hurry up, Donna did a heck of a lot of work on this.
Well, I would like to move the recommendations on.
Counselor Bondi moves. Supported by Counselor Scott. Any questions to the motion? Counselor Baker?
Yeah, just some of the details on this particular plan. And I noted in your comments that there was some deficiency in the provincial plan, and that's why you thought this was superior. How much better is it? Because does it talk about distances, or where are we going to identify these designated areas? I was a little confused on that when you said that, or your report said that you found some deficiencies in the previous provincial footprint that we were looking at doing.
Through you, your worship, I think the deficiencies in the provincial bill would make it, was the fact that it would make it very difficult to define an area where people could smoke. For example, just over here at the Ball Diamonds, if you took that radius away, you'd be across the street, so, which is difficult and very difficult to enforce. This, however, makes it easier because you have an area that's been designated for smoking, and those areas will be determined on an individual property-by-property basis in conjunction with the health unit and with community services, and looking at what is the best area to place those in terms of where children are passing through, where people are passing through sightlines and all of that stuff.
Okay. And so further questions? How close is this mirchism other municipalities that we have in the area, for instance, Leamington and ours? Are there a lot of similarities, or are they completely different?
I would have to say they are different in the sense that Christie and Krista are here tonight from the health unit. I believe that Leamington is a full ban, or maybe I should let you answer that question, if you wouldn't mind, if that's okay with council.
Okay. Move by. Seconded. Any questions? All in favor.
Hi. Thanks for the question. Right now, the town of Lake Shore has a complete ban. The town of Tecumseh has now passed as well a complete ban, and I'm just referring to the spaces that are covered under yours as well. And Leamington has a ban that includes some setbacks at some particular areas.
And so ours, is ours superior in terms of that? I just want to kind of get some difference as to how easy it is to identify and enforce, I guess is the point?
So the big difference between, and I'll use the complete banned areas, because that's probably the best comparison, they don't basically have designated smoking areas, is what's mentioned in this proposal. What a complete ban would basically be anywhere outside of that area that is banned. So as an example, if there's a complete ban at a park, by default, your designated area is anything outside, so the public property sidewalk, et cetera. So through this report and this bylaw, there would be designated areas technically on the property, and so those would be set with council, administration, and the health unit enforcement.
Thank you. And further, I note in the report that we are also going to, in addition, permit the health unit to be by law enforcement on this, or enforcement on this. How do you see that working? How many individuals do you have to enforce this? And I'm not sure, because is that going to be in addition to our by law enforcement officers, or are you going to take the full responsibility to do this?
The health unit can take the full enforcement as the primary enforcers. Your bylaws officers could technically, under the bylaw, enforce it, but we would take the lead on enforcement. We currently have four tobacco enforcement officers who enforce the entire Smoke for Ontario Act as well. They're named as secondary enforcement for the Leamington bylaw and primary enforcement for Tecumseh. We're not named in Lake Shore currently.
So your staff is going to do Leamington, Essex, and Lake Shore? No, sorry.
Tecumseh, not Lake Shore. Yes. And just for the record, though, under Bill 131 at the time, if that provincial regulation had gone through, we would have been responsible for enforcement. For this, this is very much in line with the type of activities that we're happy to undertake.
And that's in addition to your current responsibilities under the bill for enforcement at, in, I forget the act, but the restaurants as well?
Yeah. Under the Smoke for Ontario Act, we're responsible for all aspects of enforcement.
And that's four individuals?
Correct.
For all those municipalities and all that responsibility?
Absolutely.
So my further question is, is our by law enforcement officers going to be also tasked with this initiative?
Donna, thanks.
Through you, your worship, I believe that they are named in the bylaw to be tasked with that as well. I think what Christie is saying is her officers would be number one, and ours would follow up as required, when required.
Last question. How long before we get this in process in terms of identifying the designated areas, and how are we going to roll this out to the community, so everybody's aware of this plan? Because we have a lot of areas to still identify, right, in terms of designated areas?
Through you, worship, we have discussed this with the health unit. We'd be meeting with them fairly quickly, if this bylaw goes through, very quickly afterwards to start that process, and that's why we put in an implementation date of April 1, so that we would have time to get everything set up. Also, as the education component, there would be a lot of education, which the health unit does provide assistance with as well.
Okay. And sorry, I do have one further question. Have we looked at a cost impact on implementing this, and do we have any cost responsibilities with the health unit, or is that under their responsibility?
Through you, worship, I did put a cost estimate for signage and disposal units for designated areas at $7,500, and the health unit will assist somewhat with the signage only. They've also said they'll assist with all the other aspects of enforcement in choosing designated areas. I don't believe there's a cost for that.
Enforcement as well? That's gratis?
Thank you. Mr. Phillips?
Thank you. Through you, your worship. As council does know, this is a topic that's been brought back to this table many times, and it's one that administration certainly has wrestled with. I applaud Donna for the work that she's put into this, she and her team. We've spent a lot of time of late taking your direction when a number of you I know came back from AMO with the provincial direction. We're trying to balance that between that and meeting the needs of what some in the community have said, that they want still a designated area, and we believe that that was council's instruction. So this is a hybrid, recognizing that this is not something that's being promoted by the health unit. They would rather us go the full ban, but this is what we thought was in response to some of the questioning. This is kind of a grown-at-home solution. It's not one that you may see in other communities, but one that we felt fit the Essex perspective from your previous conversations on it. It's very similar, I think, what ERCA has done in some of their parks. I know at Holiday Beach, they have a number of designated areas and the signage, it's not specific, it doesn't get into distances, it just says, here's a sign, you can smoke beside that sign, don't be wandering through the park. So as Donna has indicated, if we started putting in full measurements, we would have been having issues where, at the Ball Diamonds, for example, you wouldn't be able to walk down Fairview effectively without being in the violation area. So we think this is one that you can, that we can enforce, and we can make work here. It provides for both the smokers and those that don't want it near their sports facilities or their playgrounds.
Thank you, sir. Anything further? I got a motion. All in favor of that motion? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Donna, and your staff. E. Community Services Department, report number 2014-23. Our station, our town mural.
I move the recommendation.
Supported by Counselor Bowman. Any questions? Counselor Bondi?
I just have a question as to the cost for this, or is it coming out of the mural budget?
Through your worship, there is capital funds approved for this project.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further? All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. F. Community Services, report number 2014-24. Mural located at 61 Talbot Street North. Recommendations A and B. Move by Counselor Bowman, supported by Counselor Scott. Any questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. T. Community Services, report number 2014-25. Disposal of surplus material located at the Essex Memorial Arena, 26 Fairview Avenue West, Essex Center. Counselor Baker moves, supported by Counselor Bowman. Any questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. H. Community Services Department, report number 2014-26. CN Eco Connections from the ground up grant application with recommendations. Counselor Scott?
Move the recommendation. Is that a question?
Yes, sir. Supported by Deputy Mayor Malash. Counselor Scott?
Through you, worship, maybe Doug can just comment about this. Any experience with this before, Doug, or anything with this grant, or can you comment on it at all? Because I've never heard of it before, but it's enticing for sure.
Through your worship, it is a new grant, is actually found by administrative assistant in terms of a property next to the CN rail line. They are looking for active, but we are promoting in a grant application regarding repurposing the Silo District, which is part of the greening and new native species. We're also building upon the Heritage Train Station upon it, so we're hoping it could be an additional with the SCF grant for funding and get this project moving.
Counselor Baker?
Thank you. Similar question through you, your worship, to Doug. Is this an ongoing fund that we can tap into on a number of occasions, I guess, and what other projects could we look at for this type of thing? Is it all brownfield related, I guess is my question?
Through your worship, they had five categories, about urban forests, traffic calming, school greening, transforming spaces, which is the brownfield conversions, and naturalized areas of park. But one criteria, it has to be next to CN rail line or close by.
Further, is that just on public property, or could it be on private property as well if there is a fit to the community?
Through your worship, I'm not sure either way, but I would assume that if with partnership, private could be involved as well.
Anything further? All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. I. Planning Department, report number 2014-46. Zoning Amendment, ZBA-03-14. Harrow Shopper's Drug Mart, Dillon Consulting Agent, 5157 69 King Street East, exclusive, Bacon Lots, Harrow, Ward 4. With a recommendation. Supported by Counselor Bondi. Any questions? Counselor Baker?
This is the Shopper's Drug Mart, correct?
Yes, sir.
So my question is through you, your worship, to administration, to Heather specifically. Now that we're moving forward on this project, which is pretty exciting, I guess what I would like to ask is, have we had a chance, or will we be able to work with the shopper's organization in terms of their design footprint? Because many of the big box operations may or may not have a design relative to our urban setting or rural settings. We were lucky, I think, with Tim Hortons, where we've set the standard in terms of design criteria. I think this is an opportunity for us to really kind of set the standard moving forward, that we can have some real good input to this organization, to really do a theme organization that we can play off on for the rest of the community. I know I've had some calls from the community asking, they're in favor of progress, but they certainly still want to look at our hometown, our feel in terms of the design criteria. So maybe you can speak to that if you had any ability, or how we can be involved.
Through you, your worship, we're going through the site plan control process right now. It's still early in that process, so there is time to discuss any ideas that people may have. We don't have to circulate the neighbors for site plan control applications. That's not a requirement under the Planning Act. However, I would welcome any calls or comments that anybody has, and I'd be happy to sit down and meet with anyone that would like to have some input into that process.
Yeah, so specifically, I mean, the site plan control is obviously a technical issue which we need to deal with in terms of flow and parking and that, but I think this really speaks to setting the standard for the design look. And I do know in some of my past experience working with some of these organizations, that they usually do have A, B, and C design criteria for smaller communities like ours, like in the Harrow. So I think that's where we want to go to, and maybe if there are, I don't really know if we do have a set standard for design criteria yet. I'm saying this could be the standard that sets us for one, so I don't know how you want to approach that, but I'd certainly like to be involved with the community if there are some, to look at some design plans.
Through you, your worship, I will, the applicants, consultants are here this evening, and I'm sure they'd be happy to meet with us to discuss further any ideas that they have for making it a more walkable location, more pedestrian-oriented. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Maybe if we could ask if they're here tonight, can we get a motion to hear if they do have some of these design criterias in mind?
Yes, we have a motion on the floor right now, so. Deal with this motion. Anything further? All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. Now.
I'd like to hear a motion to hear from the participants in this project.
Supported by Counselor Scott. Any questions to the motion? All in favor? Motion carries. A little purple button is pushing on, and it'll come and...
I know the routine. Thank you. I'm Melanie Muir from Dillon Consulting. I'm representing Shopper's Drug Mart at this time. They are willing to discuss and meet with the town. They have an idea at this point as to what they'd like, and we've provided a few elevations, early elevations. The building design has slightly changed since the original submission due to some loading dock issues, but the majority of the existing building is going to stay, and they're going to add on and fix the facade, and we're going through the grant programs as well. So they want to work with the community as much as possible, and we are more than happy to meet in the future through this site plan control process.
Thank you, through your worship. So I guess your facade design is somewhat flexible. Do you have any standards that are already set for, I guess, the mid-sized town or small town?
They do have some standards that they typically follow, and the one that they're looking at right now that I know of, and obviously it can change, has some of those photo mural style of their products and their business on the side of the building. They're putting some awnings on. There's going to be a small, like amenity area as well. The building is, they're trying to make it blend as much as possible, but without losing their prototypical style as well. They want to work with the town as best they can.
So that's good to hear. So you're flexible on that within your footprint, but trying to keep some of the feel for the hometown?
As well as we can. Again, our client themselves, shoppers, can speak better to that, but at this point, we have worked in many municipalities in the area and built new buildings as well as expanded existing ones, and they try to keep with the character as much as they can, and they will work. And I'll be discussing with them further with Heather as well in the coming, probably week, to nail down a little bit more so that we can present something else through the site plan process. And that way, we can bring it back and hopefully make everyone happy.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Anything further? All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. J. Planning Department, report number...
There was no motion.
Oh, there was no motion. Oh. We need a motion to... Oh, we did it. And then she thought, that's right. That's what I thought. Right. Planning Department, report number 2014-45. Farm lot severances, official plan amendment, OPA, with recommendations. Deputy Mayor Malash, supported by Counselor Baker. Any questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. K. Infrastructure and Development, report number 2014-18. Results of request for tender for asphalt concrete rubble crushing 2014. Move by Counselor Baker? Supported by Counselor Scott. Questioning Counselor Baker?
Thank you. So obviously, the disqualification, was that based on, just, can you give us a quick one, so we clearly understand that?
Through your worship, it was an incomplete tender package.
Thank you very much. Anything further? All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. Number nine correspondence. A is deferred to October the 20th meeting.
Because they've asked for it.
Because they've asked for it to be deferred. They weren't able to be here this evening, so they will be here on the 20th, I think. Okay? B. Ontario Lung Association, November is lung month. They will wish that...
Good.
Counselor Bondi, Counselor Scott. Any questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. C. Essex Center BIA resignation. Steven Bjorkman, who is in attendance, and before you allow him to resign, I'd like to say, Steve, I attended most of the meetings, and you did a great job on behalf of the business people, and I'd like to thank you from all of council for what you've done the last, maybe three years, was it? I think. Thank you very much, sir. Move by Counselor Scott? You going to accept it?
Accept with regrets.
Supported by Counselor Bowman. Any questions? All in favor of that motion? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Steve. Harrow Kinsman, Dansovi Vent Chair, relieved from bylaw number 983, specifically regular hours of operation. Move by Counselor Bowman? Supported by Deputy Mayor Malash. Any questions? All in favor of that motion? Motion carries. E. Windsor Essex County Environment Committee, September 4, 2014 minutes. Move by Deputy Mayor Malash, supported by Counselor Bondi. Questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. Committee meeting minutes. Mural committee minutes. Committee meeting minutes, mural committee minutes, August 13th and September the 17th. Received and adoption, Councilor Bondi, Councilor Scott. Questions? All in favor? Motion carries. B, Communities' Bloom Meeting, August 26, 14. Received and adoption, Councilor Bondi, Councilor Scott. Any questions? Deputy Mayor Malasch?
Just a general comment, just to remind your council that there's a five bloom celebration on October 27th. No, that's voting day, October 23rd, Thursday, October 23rd, at McGregor.
Okay.
Keep that on your calendars, please.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. D, Essex Accessibility Advisory Committee Meeting, May the 20th, 2014.
March 18th.
May 20th, oh, March 18th, sorry, I skipped one. Yep. Moved by Councilor Bondi, supported by Councilor Bowman. Any questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Now, D, Essex Accessibility Advisory Committee Meeting, May the 20th.
There's a recommendation to council.
As recommended.
There's a recommendation.
There is a recommendation.
To council.
To council, okay, on the bottom. That the Essex Accessibility Advisory Committee supports no removal, but does not support a registry and designation at this time. Received and adopted, as recommended.
Can you read that again?
Okay, Essex Advisory Committee Meeting of May the 20th was that they're looking for a mover and recommend, accept the recommendation, that the minutes of the Essex Accessibility Advisory Committee Meeting held, May 20th, be received and that the following recommendation, EAAC-05-005, that the Essex Accessibility Advisory Committee supports no removal, but does not support a registry and designation at this time.
There's a recommendation.
Okay, Councilor Bondi, supported by Councilor Scott. Questions to the motion? We need a clear, got it clear?
So what are they asking or what's the motion asking for?
Mr. Phillips?
Through you, your worship. Effectively, council had wrestled with this before and had spoken to the notion of supporting, having snow removal done by, for these residents that are designated. They don't want to be designated, they don't want a, effectively, they don't want a sticker on the home designating that this is somebody that needs that service. We are continuing to meet and I believe Doug has a meeting tomorrow or this week, I believe, and we will be discussing this with the Community Services Group, looking for an alternative way of addressing it, but this is a recommendation coming back from the accessory committee saying, sorry, not the accessibility committee, I'll get it yet, stating that they don't want to follow the process of having these homes placarded or identified.
So clearly that's just really what this is, because we're still, you're still in the process of looking at some kind of volunteer system, right? Because, so all we're saying tonight is, we agree, I think, nobody wants to be identified. We're still looking into what kind of volunteer system can apply, okay?
All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. Number of bylaws, bylaw number 1359 being a bylaw to provide for the Essex Outlet Drain Bridge for Arthur Bennett. Moved by Councilor Bowman, supported by Deputy Mayor Malasch. Any questions? All in favor? Motion carries. B, Bylaw number 1360, being a bylaw to provide for the Old Ballin Road Drain Bridge for Drewlark Farms Limited. Deputy Mayor Malasch moves, supported by Councilor Bowman. Any questions? All in favor? Motion carries. C, Bylaw number 1364, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the October 6, 2014 Regular Meeting of the Corporation of the Town of Essex. Councilor Baker moves, supported by Councilor Scott. Any questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. Financial, A, 2014 Capital Report, Promoted Received, Councilor Scott. Yes, sir, supported by Councilor Bowman. Councilor Scott?
Through you, worship, I thought this was very handy to have, very easy to read and very helpful. I like it very much. Well done to you and Jeff putting together, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. B, August 2014 Bank Payments Report. Deputy Mayor Malasch moves, supported by Councilor Scott. Any questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. Councilor votes, we've dealt with already.
Through you, worship.
Our notices of motion. Oh, excuse me?
Bylaw 1351 amended by law.
Oh, okay. Yeah, right on. This one here. Bylaw 1351 amended, being a bylaw to provide for advanced polls to be held prior to voting day.
Just make note that that's the amendment.
And the amendment is the middle one, where Wednesday, October the 15th, 2014, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the McGregor Community Center, 9571 Locker Road, McGregor, Ontario, will be held. Councilor Baker moves, supported by Councilor Scott. Councilor Baker?
Thank you, worship. So through you to Harrow, obviously, so we're providing an additional advanced poll because of the delay that happened with the company. Are we assured that we're going to have enough time now in terms of the mailing process? Have they arrived at the homes? Have we had any confirmation yet?
Through you, worship, yes, the ballots have started arriving. I have confirmation that people have started receiving the ballots in the 2000, we're concerned about the time as well. In the 2010 election, the ballots started arriving approximately, no, sorry, they were mailed out approximately October 1st, 2010. The election in 2010 was October 25th. This time, the ballots were mailed out on October 2nd, the election is October 27th. So there is enough time, yes.
Further vote? Good. Any further questions? Deputy Mayor Malasch?
I want to point out one thing, though, there's a little bit of a difference because we don't have a processing center here in Windsor. Processing center's in London and those votes will actually go further away and come back. So there's a little bit of a concern, I think, but I still think there's plenty of time. There's still an opportunity and I think in the kits it says if you haven't mailed by October the 18th, then, 17th, then bring it back into the town. So I think that's our failsafe.
I was at the Essex Post Office this afternoon talking to the manager and she said they're going all the way to Toronto and then coming back, so, yeah, so. Anything further? All in favor of that motion? Motion carries. And one more.
More?
Blood Services.
Councilor Bowman?
Yes, I was contacted on the weekend about, from the Canadian Blood Service with regard to their move or portable signs that they put out for their blood clinics. Apparently there's some issues with it with our bylaw or our bylaw enforcement officer. I wasn't able to get ahold of them today to contact him, but their thing comes up very quickly in the next week. They run every, roughly every two months. There's one in Essex and one in Harrow. They put the sign out usually about a week ahead of the event and it's taken down the day after. I'm asking the council to give the blood services the go-ahead to keep putting them up till the end of the year and if there's issues with regard to it, it can be worked out in that period of time. But it allows them to do their next two blood clinics. The signs are put in Harrow at Danielle's and I think, and at the Feed Store. Here in Essex, the one's put up here in the town hall or town lawn and the second one, I believe, is at Bo's Auto Service. So I'm not, I wasn't clear on what the issue was, so in the, and they're in a short timeframe, so what I'm doing is asking that the council allow it for the remainder of this year and so whatever the differences are, it can be worked out and adjustments can be made appropriately. And I'm making that a motion.
Motion by Councilor Bowman, supported by Councilor Bondi, with a comment.
Thank you, Councilor Bowman, for bringing this up. I just, I get called often, but my iron is always low, so I have a hard time going, but the message said that they need 5,000 people in Essex County before Thanksgiving, so anybody that's willing and healthy enough and able to get out there and thank you for bringing this up and I certainly, you can never get enough signage for that, because I know the signage works driving around, I know my boyfriend can donate and he sees the sign, he's like, I can go, so everybody get out there.
Yeah, I'm too, over 100 times giving donations, so it's a worthwhile cause for those that can get out and do it. And I'm not sure what the issue was with the sign, but this allows them to move forward and make adjustments as required.
Okay, thank you for that, sir. All in favor of that? Motion carried. Not to put our young Olivia Bernard on the hot plate, but any comment tonight, young lady? No, you're okay, thank you very much. You're always welcome. Yep, you're always welcome. Okay, looking for German? Moved by Councilor Bondi, supported by Deputy Mayor Malasch. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you very much.